Shanta coming, has anybody heard?
I've not heard anything from Shanta.
Has not either, okay. All right, are we good to go, are we live? All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the Board of Education for ESD 290. It is September fourteenth, twenty twenty at seven P M. We currently have five board members present. We will go ahead and do a roll call. Please raise your hand to identify yourself when your name is called. Linda Alderman.
Present.
Chris Cunningham.
Present.
Julie Dandrio, present. Susan Moore. She may be joining us later virtually. Shanda Olmstead. She is absent. Melilia Payne.
Present.
Harold Wingert.
Present.
And it looks like Shanda just joined us. Okay, so we now have six board members present. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we approve tonight's agenda, we do need to amend to go into executive session for the purposes of employee contract.
Julie, I think you need to bring your microphone out, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
We do need to make an amendment to the agenda to go into executive session for the purposes of personnel contract. So if we could make that amendment.
Julie, would that be executive session for negotiations?
Yes.
That be under that, be?
Seven point oh one.
Where it falls within the agenda and move it after the Mid-America conversation so that we can help Mid-America get through what we need to at this point, then we'll move that up so that we can have that conversation earlier in the process.
So we want to put it in the midst of our reports and presentations after Mid-America and before K D E A T site. Okay. So with that in mind and that amendment, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes six oh. There is a consent agenda tonight, it looks like it's mostly minutes and reports previously. Dr. Cobb, was there anything that you wanted to mention on that?
No, that's all normal stuff.
Okay, great, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please raise your right hand if you're in agreement. And that passes six oh as well. We do have one comment from the public, which I will read this evening. This was brought to the board on September sixth, twenty twenty. It is from Norman Woogie. And the comment reads, because of the nature of the influenza being highly contagious and lethal, putting all the people at risk of lung damage and/or heart disease. Whether participating in athletic sports or supporting athletic sports is responsibility of all governing bodies to set policies and rules to ensure safety first in their decisions. There has been pressure on boards to allow schools to operate as in normal times. These are not normal times. The first and utmost importance should be the protection and well-being of the children, the administration, and the teachers. There have been measures taken to provide safety from other outside dangers. One infected person might endanger many people, such as in history, citing Typhoid Mary, who was incarcerated and quarantined for twenty-six years because she was a healthy carrier but had typhoid fever. The flu problem will pass as it did in the year nineteen nineteen. We can get exposed and carry health problems all of our remaining life. The infected children's lives would change completely, ruining their chances for a future education. Education should be second only to their safety first. I don't know what the legal repercussions are for the school boards. Should waivers be signed protecting the district? I don't know. We need to be patient and careful as these dangers will pass in time. And that ends that comment. Okay, so next up, we have our reports and presentations. We have Mid-America Turf here. We will have some discussion with them and then possibly some action on how the board would like to move forward with these issues. So Jeff Porter and Kirk Grego from Mid-America have an update for us. Okay. We may have one more board member here.
Susan, you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, welcome Susan, we now have seven board members present. Welcome gentlemen.
Thank you, we appreciate it. My name is Kirk Grego, I'm the president and owner of Mid-America Construction. Jeff Porter, he is a project manager with our company. I think you all have met him before, I think he was here at a prior board meeting that I was invited to and I could not attend. Apologize for that. Would you like to start off with comments from you all or would you like me to address you all with where I see the project?
What would you prefer? Would you prefer questions from us first or?
Well, I tell you what, I'll make a statement and then you guys can come back with questions that you may have.
Perfect, thank you.
So, by the way, thank you all for your business, we appreciate it. I've been on the fields and they look beautiful. I guess in the last board meeting that Jeff attended for us, there was questions about, you know, schedule, why we were started late, all of those things. And after we've spoken, we've reviewed kind of where we came from, so to speak. I think that there's no one's fault but our own on this particular situation. A typical project is, we're usually seven days of permitting, it's typically what it is. We do these projects all over the country, a lot in the central region of the United States. Many of these projects don't require a permit because one government body can't govern another one, so that we see a lot of those non-permitted sites. And if there are permitted sites, they're a very short turnaround, usually seven days. Nonetheless, it's our fault that we didn't do our due diligence on the front end. When we had time to do that, we just assumed, and we all know what that gets us, that it would be a similar situation here in Ottawa than it obviously was not, which pushed us back from starting because of permitting. Again, that's no fault of the school district or anyone involved in the school district. That's what pushed the project back. And, you know, at the end, we pushed as hard as we possibly could without letting quality suffer at all. Our number one priority for the district was to provide a pristine project at the end. I mean, we look at these projects as at least an eight to ten-year relationship between us and the end user, the owner, so to speak. And so it does us no good to cut corners during the process because, I mean, we have to be the ones that stand behind that work for the relationship period with you all. So I just want to make sure everybody here knew that there was, at no point did we, were we trying to cut any corners? And I don't, I know that hasn't been a comment or anything, I just want to make sure you all know that that was of the utmost importance for us, to finish with quality, not just as strong as possible for time, but quality as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we do have some questions from our board members, who would like to start? Chris Cunningham, are you going to start for us tonight?
Yes, Chris Cunningham. I think Jeff, when you were here last, we talked about, I got notes here, delivery of turf was around the tenth on the football field and a little bit later on the soccer. Obviously, we did not, we got the football field, I believe, done and everything swept in by the twenty-eighth, because twenty-eighth was your drop dead date, but you thought that, at that time, you still thought the soccer field would be the twenty-eighth, but.
Correct.
And I can tell you, I walked the field several times, a couple of times with Dr. Cobb's. They're great, as you had stated. I will say, when I walked the soccer field after you guys had the big push week and then no one was here the following week, there, I believe you sent a representative down, and there was a lot of little things. And as of today, I walked around and we were still removing dirt off a sidewalk that our kids last week were walking across just to get to. So is the fields what we paid for? Yeah, we got what we paid for, I just think we missed a lot of little details, you know, attention to details. And that's my, I guess my biggest concern, is that we just never truly got it wrapped up.
Okay, well, we're still not complete as far as final completion. We've reached substantial completion where you guys can utilize the fields. I think I had representatives of our team here today working on things, trying to work our way out of the soccer field still. Just with last week with the rain, we tried, we just couldn't get wrapped up last week.
Yeah, I understand, it would just been nice, the week before you left, when you came off the field to at least gotten the dirt off the sidewalk that the kids go from O H S to O M S.
Yeah.
So they do not have to go over that.
I agree with that, and that's something that I'll have to make sure I address in the future with our crews, make sure that they're looking at those details when they're wrapping projects up. And I appreciate the comment.
Yeah, it's just the little details that, you know, like, I walked the field Monday, I think, of when we were supposed to have our first soccer game. And there was still just a lot of little things left trash-wise and turf-wise, just scraps laying around. And I believe your representative, when I talked to Dr. Cobb's, even said that you guys could have done better on that part. And I understand, when you have field guys, they tell the office, yes, I'm done, but their idea of done and us all in this room's idea of done are sometimes completely two different things.
Any other comments from the board? Harold Wingert?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Last time you were here, you mentioned that you were anticipating laying the asphalt between soil stabilization and then laying of the turf. And you went into great length about asphalt needs to cure out twenty-eight days, could go potentially quicker than that. And I guess, I'm just wondering why that wasn't done and what, sorry, and what's the plan going forward as far as ensuring, you mentioned about the quality of the track. I am concerned that as we get later in the year, we let that asphalt cure out before you seal it over with the rubberized membrane. So what's your thoughts going forward and why didn't we do it between soil stabilization and before turf?
Well, I think what we were trying to do was trying to get it in, you know, I don't recall exactly, I think we were trying to get it in from the rock before the turf started, because the stabilization was done when I was here last time.
Right, that is correct. What we talked about was the laying of the asphalt.
Yeah, so I did everything I could to push for an asphalt contractor to get down here. I contacted three different contract, three different asphalt contractors. I can't just use any asphalt contractor for track work. It's very precise, very particular and specialized. And just with the summer, and we all kind of thought that with COVID, things would loosen up and there'd be more availability of crews. And that didn't happen, the exact opposite happened, more work was out there and these contractors just wouldn't free up. I tried kilo here locally, you know, right after we were told that we were going to move forward on the track, and they told me that it was going to be the end of September before they could get here. Another contractor that I've been working with, Cielo Matic out of Kansas City, they told me that at that time that, you know, they'd be able to get here in August is what their plan was, and they have not been able to get here. Just with weather and other projects pushing back, it just keeps pushing the date for this project back as well, which is very, very typical in the asphalt world. So, right now, I have them tentatively scheduled to hopefully be out here grading sometime this week, and by the end of next week is my goal to have them here paving. But between the end of next week and the following week is when they've told me that they're going to be able to fit it in as far as the paving schedule.
And who's doing paving for you?
It's going to be Cielo Matic. Yeah, so again.
They paved many track areas.
Yeah. Again, I tried reaching out to kilo again and at, you know, they told me that now it's going to be even past Thanksgiving in order for them to be able to do it, so.
And what's the process once it gets laid this late in the year? How long do you have to let it cure out before you start sealing it?
So, I mean, as far as the cure time, it still kind of remains the same. I mean, we really need to give it that twenty-eight day cure time.
Sure.
Like we talked last time, fourteen days on asphalt is an acceptable in the industry. It just depends on weather and how much, you know, rain and bleaching, you know, getting the oils out of the asphalt happen.
Right. And then the process after it is cured out, how long till asphalt's cured, you get back on it, do you finish the track?
So, once the asphalt's cured, so then we're going to be, you know, looking at the weather and watching temperatures and things like that. The basemat, which is the first part of the track surface, it's the eleven-millimeter paved portion of the track, that typically takes about four to five days from getting onsite, getting prepped and getting it paved. And then after that, you still have a couple, two to three days of prep with plastics and things like that for the spray. And the spray typically takes two to three days and then cleanup after that. So you're looking at about a two-week window to get the track surfacing done.
And do you have temperature conditions you have to monitor during that period of time?
Yeah, you need to shoot for that fifty degrees and rising of the surface itself.
Okay. All right. I know that in our last board update, we received a lot of the inspection reports. I was curious on the dating of the inspection reports, and I haven't read them yet, so. But it looked like to me that a lot of the inspection reports were dated the same date, if I recall right, late July. And I guess what I just was, I may be a little bit out of turn, but it looked like there were a lot of inspection reports had the same date on them. And I was just interested, can you talk us through how you, because last time, I was actually remote, but I asked you a lot of questions about nuclear testing and all that, and you said you get us the test results, which we were just recently provided. When you reviewed the test results for compaction, did you see anything that concerned you for longevity of the project?
No, I did not. As far as the days of them, there should have been probably three dates would have been, it wasn't a period of a week or anything like that, but it should have been either two or three specific days that the testing happened.
Okay. I guess back to you, have you reviewed the test results? Are you comfortable that the test results were acceptable?
Well, I have not reviewed the test results, that's what the project manager would do. Jeff has as much experience when it comes to infield knowledge and going over test results, making sure that we have completed our project to the standards, construction standards that are set forth out there. So I would be lying to you if I said, yeah, I'm comfortable, because I didn't look at the reports myself.
I guess from my perspective, I do a lot of owners rep for construction.
Yes, sir.
The last time, there was a lot of discussion about who should have ordered the soil report. You are actually correct that the owner is responsible, but in my thirty, forty projects I've done in the last five years, I've always ordered them on behalf of the owner. Second of all, I'm kind of surprised. Second of all, I'm kind of surprised in this project with a change order of $125,000 for soil stabilization, you haven't reviewed it, because I think that was quite a discussion and a concern of the board at the last meeting. And we put a lot of investment into soil stabilization, and a lot of trust went into those reports. So I guess from my standpoint, I certainly hope the reports are valid, and I have no reason not to think they are. But I am, you know, that's why I was just asking who reviewed them and what your thoughts are, because obviously, if we have a soil issue, it's going to affect the performance of the track out there over the next few years, so...
I understand. So just, and again, you are correct, but the way that we're set up as a company, that is, each project manager's job is, I mean, they put their signature to such things as lab results, test reports. I mean, that is what they're responsible for, because they may have five or six projects going, where I have, you know, hundreds of employees trying to guide the ship, so to speak. And again, that's not saying that your project isn't, you know, of the utmost importance, but the way that our company is set up, that is their job to make sure that they review those reports.
Well, I want to make sure that everybody understands that the reports didn't come from me or Mid-America. Those reports came directly from Olson. So they're still strictly a third party. They're not a Mid-American employee or a Mid-American company, so...
Absolutely understand that. We discussed that.
I understand that as well.
But I'll equally be blunt, I'm not so sure there's anybody in the room that understands how to read a report. So when you hand that report, I mean, we have educators, we have people who are specialized in their industry, they don't specialize in reading Olson reports every day, okay? And you used the term, you were surprised you came into a site that was pumping with asphalt, I mean, with dump trucks, and I was surprised you were surprised, because I'm sitting here thinking, I, you know, so I guess I'm just wanting to make sure that somebody actually reviewed those reports and understood, you know, that you weren't relying, because you relied on the owners to order the report. And I just want to make sure you weren't relying on the owners to comprehend and understand what those reports meant, because it wouldn't be fair to the district office to, who receive those, to understand what those reports were. So that's all I was asking is who...
Really good question.
Yep.
I understand your question now.
You know, so...
Yeah, I reviewed every one of them, and they all passed with flying colors, and they do, you know, if anybody wants to take the time to read them and look at them, they do all indicate that they pass on their merits. So, and if you have any questions when you look at them, feel free to call me.
And then the last question I have for you is drainage. Part of the reason we're in this issue, not the only one, but a part, one reason, is drainage. And have we solved the drainage issue so when we get our fall and spring rains, we aren't dumping all the water onto the track and surfaces?
I guess, which drainage issues were the problem?
We talked before that you have the north kind of entrance, if you will, and it comes down, and we do have some catch basins, but a lot of what was happening before, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Cobb, is we were having overflow onto the track from what I call the stands area and the walkway into the deal. So my question is, is have we looked at the drainage to ensure that we don't have this exact same problem creating, that we're bringing water from what I call the northeast down through the, and then under the stands and by the stand and over the curb and onto the new track?
I think what Harold's talking about is at the starting blocks, where everything comes off the concession stand, all that water before was somehow infiltrating under the track. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Harold, what he's trying to ask, is what you guys have installed via the football field and what we've done at the track, is that water going to shed and either make it into the drainage system to where we don't have to worry about that all of a sudden we heaved a brand-new track? Is that correct, Harold?
Yeah, so I mean, part of our problem before, you guys walked out there, you saw when you arrived, and one of your comments, if I understand right, why we replaced and spent $400 and some thousand dollars on replacing the track, is we're having heaving and hoeing going on because of all the moisture coming down. So what I'm asking is, are we going to get into the exact same issue again? Because soil stabilization's great, great asphalt's great, but if we're dumping all that water back on it, we're still having the same issue. So I guess what I'm asking is, did you analyze and have you accounted for all that water that's coming down and not the, so we're not back here in two or four years asking the same questions?
Sure. Let me, I'll answer a couple of those that I can from my early experiences here. So with the first, the second, and the third time I was here, those drainage basins that are on the incoming, the gate area, we will call that, there's several basins through there, those, two or three of those basins were covered up with debris, leaves, things like that. And I think that that's part of your problem. I'm not saying that's all the problem, but if those basins, we actually talked about it with our civil engineer as we walked the site, looking at some of those issues, and those are the things that, yeah, there's two of the basins there, those are the things that we were looking at, is what are we doing with that water that's coming towards the field, you know?
Correct.
Because we're not, we're not changing, obviously, the elevation that's there of the concrete, you know, the walkway, where the fence and everything is. We are looking at everything inside. So all that water that comes down the hill, since we didn't do any work, we're not changing that. As far as the track, what did we change on that outside pitch? Do you recall what that outside?
So, I mean, on the very outside edge, we didn't change anything as far as elevation, but the slope across is at a, it's a plus 1%, so it's like 1.2, 1.3% across on that.
Could whoever's speaking go to the thing? I'm so sorry, I can't hear you.
Sorry. Sorry. So what I was saying was, from the, on, all the way around the perimeter of the track, we didn't change anything from an elevation standpoint. It's, the exterior elevation still remains the same. What we changed was the slope across it, as well as the interior elevation to make it all true. So the interior of the track has a true constant elevation, and then the exterior of the track has a cleaner elevation and a slope across. So as far as the water that's coming down and across, it, I mean, it's still probably, whatever's not going to these basins and getting directed to those basins is still going to come across the track. The stabilization is what's going to, you know, help limit and mitigate that heaving issue underneath the track, as well as the turf itself, the drainage inside the turf's going to accept that water at a much faster rate so that nothing's backing up on the track.
It will help the heaving and hoeing, I agree with you, but it's still going to allow water to penetrate. I guess the question I'm asking is, is that if we haven't addressed the water coming down, and if it gets out onto the track, then are we not at risk of it, over years, deteriorating that track like the previous track did? Either it's going to get through your crack, freezing thaw through your top deal, it's going to get into the asphalt, freeze and thaw it there. So my question is, if we haven't addressed the water down to it, then have we addressed what we're doing with water? And are we concerned that there's water potentially coming down, if you will, from the top onto that track? Are we concerned, and are we going to be sitting here in two or three years and somebody's going to be standing up there going, well, you should've known that you go have a water issue? And I don't want to hear that in two or three years, whether I'm sitting here or not. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, that was a big issue why we're here tonight, because we had a lot of heaving and hoeing going on, and that track was starting to pull apart. So I just want to make sure that if that was a fundamental reason, two months ago, we spent 1 point whatever million on a track, I mean, $400,000, whatever, I want to make sure we've addressed that issue. And if you're, if you, I guess I'm a little bit concerned, if you don't even know the issue, we haven't addressed it. So I mean, so I'm a little bit concerned that we obviously haven't addressed it because you don't even know the issue. So I guess maybe I've answered my own question.
Well, the, one of the things that I will tell you that, and it was a conversation that Dr. Cobb and I had, Dr. Cobb's, I apologize, was that there's asphalt all along that area in front of the bleachers.
Correct.
That has remained, it stays, it's staying there, you know, there's fencing and everything inside of that. And that asphalt's pretty beat up. I mean, it really is, it's got a lot of cracks in it, so that's going to let moisture through. I mean, I can't control anything outside of that, all the way through that area. And we had put some numbers together, I think, to seal that up, and the reason for the sealing that up is to not allow any more moisture to go into those cracks, you know, so everything is shedding, sheet flowing off, whether it's sheet flowing across the track like it's supposed to, or it's staying on the outside of the fencing area and then doing its thing with gravity and mother nature and taking it down and around the, you know, into that swale. So as far as, I have no concern over what is going to fall on that track, and I have no concern to where we butt up to the old asphalt or concrete, as long as that is maintained and sealed, where it doesn't allow water. I mean, that's what happens with most tracks, is you have concrete, you have asphalt side by side, over time, you know, they have differentiators, heave.
That's why I'm asking the question.
And then there's a gap that, you know, is, it just, it happens, right?
Correct.
It shrink, and a lot of times, school districts don't go and maintain that crack. I understand they have a lot of buildings and a lot of things going on, I understand that. But it's really important to make sure, over time, that those cracks are maintained, or you have more additional moisture that can get down. And it's no different than your driveway at home or anything else, it's just now we're looking at it, because it's such a large investment, you know, the track surfacing portion as well as asphalt, large investment. Back to Jeff's point about the soil stabilization, and it sounds like you're very versed in it, and if I'm saying something that's talking down to you, I apologize, because that's not the intent.
Sure.
The stabilization changes the soil makeup, right? We all understand.
Right, absolutely.
And so what that, what happens when you get heave and thaw is because you get swells, typically, you know, moisture in the material underneath swells, which causes areas to heave, right? With the stabilization in there, that's what that's supposed to do, is not allow that heaving to happen. Even though there's moisture present, it doesn't allow it to absorb into the soils and therefore the heave.
You are spot on, I don't question anything. I'm asking, but before I get to that rock-based soil stabilization, if I understand the makeup, because we haven't seen a topo, but I understand you have a sprayed-on turf that I run on, right? So my assumption is that if there are cracks that develop in that, and we get a Kansas winter and it freezes outside, and there's moisture there, it can play with that rubberized membrane. Is that a statement or not? So if moisture gets into your, little tiny crack gets there and it freezes, is it going to push your away? So then my moisture goes on down into my asphalt, okay? Same thing happens. It gets a little bit colder, it gets, now penetrates through the rubberize, now I'm into that asphalt, and I'm taking that freezing, I'm pushing that asphalt a little bit further away. Now, the heaving and hoeing's fine, but I haven't got to the heaving and hoeing. What I'm now worried about is, you're right, I've stopped the heaving and hoeing, but I haven't stopped the penetration, because I have all this excess moisture on the track. And so what I, what my question is, is that, so we've stabilized. The other thing is, by stabilizing the soil, I mean, soil, we've actually kind of, if you will, limited penetration on into that rock. It doesn't penetrate, water won't move on through that soil like it used to. So if we allow penetration on the surface to get there, it goes into the asphalt, allows that to go in, then I have water under that asphalt sitting there longer than I would if there was no soil, because that rock is going to act as, if you will, deterrent to sink on in. Am I correct? So my only question is, is that if we're, if we haven't addressed, and like you said, the danger I don't think is at the 50-yard line, center of the field, we have that nice cyclone, that's not where I'm worried about. I am worried about this is going to start around the edges, which by the way, we still have heaving and hoeing going on, right? Because in the parts that you haven't done soil stabilization, that soil still going to move, okay, putting pressure against the soil that we did stabilize. So my question is exactly what you were addressing to. The perimeter of the track, okay, the time to fix it is now. If we have an issue with water coming down, if we have issues with the perimeter of the track, like you said, we need to seal it, is now not the time to fix it versus after we lay this brand-new track down, brand-new asphalt, rubberized running surface, paint really nice lines, then aren't we kind of locked into where the grandstand, where the stands are in this asphalt you were referring to? Is now the time to take care of that versus down the road?
Absolutely. Anytime that you can mitigate any moisture from penetrating through asphalt, you're obviously better off. I personally had walked this, measured all the cracks in the, around the perimeter of this, so we would, and we've given some pricing to fill those cracks and also to seal coat that whole area, to basically put a fresh coat of paint around the outside. It's for maintenance, though. I mean, that's what, you know, the tack coat or the spray coat, asphalt coating would be over the top.
Correct.
Again, it's visual, as well as not only aesthetic, but it's actually functional, fill those cracks, so we're minimizing the moisture that goes into there. Does that answer your question?
It does, okay.
We talked about it, we looked at it, we put a price to it. As far as the water that comes off of the hillside, that was your, kind of your original question. You know, if those basins are cleaned out, you know, I don't know if we're talking about a two-inch rainfall or a 10-inch rainfall. I'm going to guess a 10-inch rainfall's going over no matter what, right?
Right, right.
But we're looking at a, something that would be, you know, a bi-monthly event, a couple inches of heavy rain. That's more what you're talking about, and I would assume that when that project was originally built, that those basins and all of that grading was to compensate for that coming down. But as far as, again, not, we didn't do any work out there, so I can't say, but the new drainage we put in is going to work, because obviously we didn't...
No, but I guess what I am going to say to you, when you're in front of us in two years, we have track failure, don't use the drainage as an issue.
Right, and I would like to say, on March 26th, we were informed as a board that you had identified the culprit to our track issues. I'm so sorry, I lost my place here. The culprit, we have identified the culprit of the track issues with being from the drainage from the new walkways that we, that were installed when we built the new concession stand. And that came from you all. But now you're saying that that's not the issue, it's the drain, the clogged basins.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not saying that at all. But you've got to remember, you had cracks in your asphalt in the track that were wide, and that allowed water to go underneath. Your old surface did not have any stone underneath it.
Correct.
The track was on dirt, okay? So therefore, when you have, you don't have a surface to lay asphalt on top of, the asphalt is very vulnerable to heaving and thaw, okay? So when you have moisture that comes down, goes into one of those large cracks that were across there, and I think that water was coming down the hill and going over the track, wasn't here during the rainfall, but I, I mean, you could see the pattern of how the water was, and then it was dropping in those cracks and then saturating the soil underneath that has not been stabilized and did not even have any base stone.
So, so back to what she just said and you said, I'm going to marry those up.
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to piggyback, so thank you on that. What I'm asking is, so in March 26th, so thank you for finding that, I knew we had talked about this, my mind's as sharp as she, hers is, I give her credit for that, okay? So I guess what I'm just wondering is, so we're not going to, if the same overflow goes on, which we know is going to happen, and it gets onto your track, we're still fine?
I'm not concerned with it.
You're not concerned with it at all? Okay.
Again, maintaining that upper, over time, I'm not worried about when we get done, it'll be fine, but over time, if that crack from the old asphalt, I'm not talking about in any of the new construction, I'm talking about the old asphalt, where we butt up to it, if that crack opens up, if the asphalt on the outside, on the outside of the fence, I'm calling that, if that asphalt does what asphalt does, flexes especially when it hasn't been stabilized and pulls away, that'll have to be maintained to keep moisture from going down in there.
Will that affect your warranty?
No, that won't affect our warranty. It shouldn't have any issue with the track surface.
It won't have any issue with the track, regardless.
Harold, can I, can I ask a clarifying question? Because this is not my area of expertise at all, and I definitely need the layperson version. So is what I'm hearing, that that area behind the stadium, by the, front of the, where the concession stand was, there's, we're still going to have inches of water when it rains there, and our feet are going to get wet, but it's not going to adversely affect anything? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, the, as Melody has...
I have another question to go with hers. So did we get a new drain along the north side of the track in these runoff areas to address the future deterioration due to water?
There's no drain, there's no work outside of the track.
So we did not get a new drain on the north side of the track to address these runoff issues?
That is correct.
Do we need one?
Jeff, I'm sure you've spent a lot of time out here.
Yeah, I honestly, I can't answer that question. I haven't been out here when it's raining, so I can't honestly answer that question.
Okay, so Jeff, I'm going back to the comment you made that I thought was very puzzling, when you said that you watched a dump truck go across our lot and it wasn't pumping, or it was pumping. And I thought to myself, as a project superintendent, I don't know... And I thought to myself, as a project superintendent, I don't know that I would have made that comment. But, so let me help you with this. I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I'm not so sure that I would expect you to know the answer. But I might have asked an engineer when I was doing my, my deal, you know, or do, you, because you hired a civil engineer to do this, right? I might have asked a civil engineer that question. And I might leave this meeting and make a phone call tomorrow and ask a civil engineer that very question and saying, do you, based upon the topo and based upon the existing drains that we see in this pretty picture, do we have any concerns? Because I have a hunch that we have a concern, okay? Because we obviously identified in March 26th, and I knew we had had a discussion at some point in time about the overflowing of the water, okay? So I guess my question is, I'm not, I don't, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, it's fine, you don't know the answer. But I, I think you would have at least asked the question, knowing that on March 26th, we had a culprit, okay? Of that question is, what are we doing with the excess water? And I think we know that we're getting water coming down this area. We know it's going to go over that curb at some point in time. I'm not worried about a quarter inch rain. I'm not looking worried about a drizzle over the year, yes, you're right, uh, board president, that we will have wet feet. What I'm worried about is a two or three inch rain that we get occasionally in Kansas and, in a short period of time. And, you know, tho- those may or may not pick up all the water, we have a lot of excess water, okay?
So it sounds like you have some questions you'd like them to find some answers to.
Absolutely.
Can you give me those questions so that I can make sure that, because we've been kind of, I don't, I don't want to get any answers resolved.
I think they should talk. I think they should, uh, I think you should ask your civil engineer if there's going to be water issue coming off this area and on to your track portion. And I understand onsite, offsite, okay? So here's a classic example where we're going to get into an issue in about two years, maybe three years, where they're going to claim that there's an offsite issue causing problems onsite.
Okay, so you want them to.
Because our perimeter of construction is the outer ring of the track.
So what question do you want them to answer, just so I, again?
So are we going to have offsite water issues coming on to the track?
Okay.
And, you know, you guys can answer in-house, you don't have to hire an engineer, I just want it answered. You know, that, we're not going to be in two years here asking that very question, saying, we have a, uh, what I call, you know, an accelerated deterioration of our track due to excessive water coming from offsite on to the track.
And do you gentlemen feel like you can answer that tonight? Or do you feel like you need to get some additional information and get back with us?
I would like to take a look at our, our topos from our civil before I answer that. To see how much, you know, what is the percentage of fall through there? And, you know, how, how does that water help? Just percentage of fall, we'll just leave it at that.
I think there's several questions you ought to, yeah, it should, you, and all that.
The other question I will ask is our superintendent that was here the whole time, because he was here during many rain events, uh, to see what, what he witnessed there as well. You know, did, did he see water come across that at a one inch rain? So we'll get some, some true information from people that were on site during rain events.
Absolutely.
And then my last question, then I'll defer to other people. Um, we've had some unique pricing. You know, my first inclination was the soil stabilization, uh, was a top dollar change order. And I'm not saying it was out of line or excessive, but let's just put it this way, there was no value proposition given to it. We were given a flagpole, uh, change order that in my mind, $19,000 for three flagpoles was an excessive.
Flagpoles.
What's that?
Two flagpoles.
Two flagpoles, that's even worse than I thought, okay? Uh, I thought maybe $19,000 for two flagpoles. Uh, we build a few flagpoles at new schools the last few years, so we kind of know what flagpoles run. I kind of thought maybe that was an excessive amount. Uh, I shared that with Dr. Cobb's on that. So I guess my, my overall question is, if you've shared a pricing with us to fix the asphalt, and kind of that's where I was leading anyway, to be quite blunt, is I think we should take a look at fixing that asphalt just before you lay down all this turf, so we don't have this discussion in two or three years about accelerated deterioration of the track you just laid. I think it will protect our investment long-term, okay? So we've now, you know, invested a lot of money with your company and I think you've done a fine job, so I don't have any problem. I think now is the time for us to mutually come together and say, how do we protect that investment? Because quite honestly, I'm going to have Dean keep the conversation of this filed away in the, uh, archives. And then the same thing with what your engineers go come back. And that's kind of why I'm pointing you to, I, I think as a civil engineer ought to ask the question. I appreciate you go ask the superintendent. I love, I, eyes on the ground, how does it really work? I really want an engineer to answer the question. I think you know why I want an engineer to answer the question. Because in two years, I won't rely on that engineering statement, okay?
So what was the second part that you wanted them to find out, so I, I can write that down?
The second is, the first one is civil engineer import of the water. And then second of all, is, uh, whether or not we need to go around and seal that asphalt now to protect our investment and have them look at their numbers and make sure they're giving us a, uh, what I call a value proposition, uh, and not inflated change order. So those are my two questions.
And is that something you'd be willing to get back with us on or provide that information?
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
But as far, I mean, we would, we would love for you all to have, I mean, have someone come out independently and do that work. That, that work that we're talking about, it has no effect on, on our surface. You can understand what I'm saying, we, our cutoff is here. All the work we looked at was outside of the track, all the way around there. So it would be no issue for us, for you all to, to independently have someone do the crack sealing and do, and do the, the coating over the top of that. I mean.
I don't disagree with you, but, but, but you're in construction, right?
Yes, sir.
So when, when's the best time to do that work?
As soon as we are paved.
Okay, or while you're paving, right?
While we're paving, it's fine.
While they're there?
In conjunction, yeah.
Same company go do both, most likely?
I, I don't know if Seal-O-Matic has a, has a seal coat crew or not, I don't know that.
Yeah, probably. I mean, it's, it'd be totally different than the asphalt guys.
It won't be the same crews?
No.
Okay, and can they access it without getting on your track? Because there is not a lot of room in front of that track. So you think all the work could be done without interfering any quality on your track?
There's three feet between that and the fence going around the turns.
They, they would be able to access it without, without hurting the asphalt of the new pavement?
Yeah.
If that's a question.
Or your, or your turf, or if they did it in six months?
They won't be around the turf.
They won't be around the turf.
Okay, all right.
But I, I would like to address the, the statement about the flagpoles because there wasn't anything inflated. I can show you an invoice that I just paid today, over $6,000 for one flagpole for a project. So, I mean, there's lots of different variations of flagpoles. I don't know what flagpoles you guys installed at the schools that you installed them. But I, I don't like the, the implication that we were trying to gouge anyone, because that's not the fact. I mean.
I think I stopped short of saying gouge, I think I used the word top dollar.
Right.
Okay, I think you implied, uh, I'm not saying you're incorrect in your implications, uh, but I was very careful with my words to say top dollar.
So, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands that we've been very upfront and very forthcoming with Dr. Cobb's through the pricing. And at no point, I mean, you guys are a good client. I mean, you, you have given us a, a very sizable contract. So at no point do we need or want someone to come to Ottawa and, and have a school board member or anyone say that, oh yeah, they're, they were here and they tried gouging us for, you know, $3,000 or whatever, because that's not the case.
Okay.
All right, I'll, I'll piggyback on that. You guys were low bidder and, um.
You've made up for it.
I will say that we did two flagpoles during our last pond project together for less than $6,000. And they were both 20 and 30 foot poles. So I know we, uh, ordered poles ourselves from talking to Dr. Cobb's and we definitely came in relatively under. So when that happens, what it makes us start thinking is, okay, well, this 8,500 for the crack sealing that you measured and the sealing of the asphalt, I, I will tell you, I have walked every square inch around the perimeter of that, it is bad. But that 8,500, we've resealed and crack sealed a whole parking lot for that in the last six or eight months, because we just did that on most of our building surfaces. So it just makes us start asking, we're not saying you're gouging, but when we start saying, hey, we've just done this in the last 12 months and it was X dollar and we see this, it makes us start asking questions of why, how we got so much higher.
Understandably so. What, what, your point, I understand. Um, back to Jeff's point, because I went back to him, Dr. Cobb brought this up to me about the flagpoles and I said, let me dig into it and let me see, see what that is. Because, um, the last thing we want to do is to walk away, like Jeff just said, and have you all say, they did a good job, but we feel that we overpaid. And that, because that's not, we want to deliver best value, right? It may not be the best price, right? There's a difference between best value and best price.
You and I will always agree on value proposition.
And so when, when I asked Jeff that question, now what happened with these flagpoles? Uh, Dr. Cobb's was concerned that we had a, you know, a, um, absorbent, uh, price for these flagpoles. And Jeff said that, he goes, look, I just, the project we're looking at in Meade County, I just ordered, here's the flagpole I just ordered for that, I mean, this has been, you know, a month and a half ago or two months ago. And here's the price of the flagpole, it's 6,100 or whatever it was, times two. So then, I mean, you still got to go, I mean, to do that work, you still got to mobilize a different crew. We don't have the equipment here to do it, it's different. So in my mind, what he explained to me was, was just, you know, it's still a lot of money, I'm not saying it's not. Now, again, we weren't comparing, we didn't say that's an ABC flagpole and this is an ABC flagpole.
Right.
But again, 1,500 or whatever you, you said for a flagpole versus 6,000.
Well, we just did two of them at schools for less than 6,000 bucks together.
But again, I just want to make sure you guys didn't think that we took that, took what you all told us and said, ah, too bad, because that wasn't the case. We went back and looked at the numbers.
We appreciate that.
In my mind, it was justified, the cost of the flagpole may not be apples for apples for flagpoles. Not saying that those aren't good ones or anything like that, but that's, that's the way we looked at it. So the last thing again, is that we want you all to feel the way that you're feeling right now, that we may be trying to get in your pocket unfairly, because that's not the case.
I don't know that I feel that, I just made this statement, I thought it might be top dollar. But go ahead, I'll, I'll defer to Chris.
Um, so we were talking about water, uh, between Melidia and Harold. I know from walking the perimeter, like I said, the set of steps that comes down off the main bleachers, that asphalt actually falls back towards under the bleachers. So then when you come off that bottom step, down onto the track, you have a slope surface. And the problem is the way that is sloped back towards the bleachers goes with what they're saying. We are going to hold water that sheds from the old concession stand and everything. We are going to hold water along that line there until it evaporates or soaks in. So my question to you guys is, have you ever put a concrete curb around the perimeter? Before, I mean, I didn't know if.
Around your perimeter?
Yeah. Because wh- what really ultimately caused our cracks and the, other than just the surface is, what causes asphalt to crack like that a lot of times, get the separation, is when we go through a severe drought and the ground cracks underneath and then it shadows right through the asphalt and it pulls apart. I think with stabilization, we're not going to see that pulling apart when it's stabilized that with the type of material it was stabilized with. My, my concern is, and I think it was some others here on the board, is the water along the north and the east side of the track. And that section that we're, have left in there by the starting block, that big triangle, it has quite a bit of cracks that are going to allow moisture and stuff in as well. But as I said, I'm concerned of the 8,500 when we've done a whole track or a whole parking lot for that.
So Chris, if, if they get back with us on that question that Harold identified, is that the same question that you have then as well?
Yeah, I, I share the same concern.
Okay, all right.
And I just had one follow-up question because I'm not as bright as they are about these things. So you all say that you're only responsible within the oval, but me, as an uneducated person on this, I would think this is your project and you should make it all right. So that is not what you would think, you do not think that you should do the drain, that we should look elsewhere to put that drain in? You don't think that that falls in your project? Is that what you're telling us, like, that we need to be responsible for that?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know if I would go to the, to the link to say that you would be responsible, but I mean, where do we stop? Because the water starts all the way to the school, right? I mean, that's really where it starts. So as, as a contractor, I would say, you know, we need to pick up water from the beginning, all the way up in the parking lot, as well as, as we get closer to the fields. And so as a contractor, where, where do I stop that? I mean, you had flooding on the other side of town a couple of years ago. I mean, you know, there, there's issues in, in a lot of places and contractors have to pick a point to stop, right? Because the, the thing, what I don't want to have you have to say is, man, those guys, they just keep on bringing up things and they just keep wanting us to spend money. I brought up the, the ceiling to Dr. Cobb's because he said, you know what, what can we do about this? So I said, let me take a look at it. This wasn't something that I went and, and did on my own, because I don't want you to feel that I'm, I'm trying to spend more of the district's money.
Well, not only that, I mean, we don't know what your, you know, five-year plan is. Is it to redo all that asphalt underneath the bleachers and around the bleachers? And, and what, what, what other projects are in the works? We don't know that. I don't know that.
Well, the problem with trying to do that asphalt later is we're going to have to get on a brand new surface that we've just done to be able to access that. And I caution doing that and risking the damage to a track surface that we just paid $430,000 for. My question is to everybody in this room, how do we fix that so we're not coming back two and three years later trying to fix something? And I think Harold, you were going that direction earlier.
I'm having.
To try to fix something that maybe needs addressed now.
And I, I fully, uh, uh, appreciate what you're saying. I would, as an owner up, I would never say you have to go all the way to the street or all the way to the parking lot. But I think Melidia's point is, we're not saying it's in your budget. We're not saying that it's your responsibility and, and we're going to spank your hands if you don't. But I think what she's saying is, and what I was trying to say, so I'm going to piggyback on her comment because she's a lot better at articulating her thought process than I am. Um, and that's why, but here is what we're trying to say. If an offsite event impacts your onsite, uh, performance of your installed turf and, uh, track, I would think as a company, you would want us to address that, okay? And so to, to the point of, you know, how far back do you go? Well, I don't know that you need to go all the way to the parking lot. But by golly, if I saw something that within the first 20, 30 feet that I thought was going to impact the performance of my track long-term or my turf long-term, I might bring that up to the owner. So I think, you know, back to the value proposition, I'm not going to say to you, go all the way to parking lot or Ash Street or 13th Street or 11th or whatever. What I am going to say to you, and that's what she's trying to say, is if as a company, you see something around the perimeter of what we're doing that's going to impact the performance of your track, now's the time to bring it up to our attention. Not in two years when we have accelerated depreciation of the track and we're all sitting here trying to figure out why. And somebody comes back to a March 26th deal and says, well, we told you, one of the problems was water was, uh, over, if you will, overflowing on to the track. In any way it got there, we don't know how it got there. Other than we do know their origin came from heaven itself, okay? So I guess what I'm just saying is, uh, as your civil engineer is looking at this over the next couple of days, I think it would be behooving of yours to take a look at that and say, no, it's fine, you know, we'll get a little extra water, we can handle it. And if that's the answer, I'm great with that. I mean, if what you're telling me is a little overflow is fine. I also understand, you can't, we got 11 inches here, what, a year ago? That's a once in a 50 years, 100 year deal. I, I'm fine with that, okay? Water's going everywhere on 11 inches, okay? I get that.
I, I guess I, I just, I foolishly assumed that the problem that you addressed, the, the, the cause of would be fixed within the project. So I think I'm just a little disappointed in the, the overall project that the very first problem that was identified as the root cause on March 26th was not solved within the completion of this project.
So what, what, as you all are talking, I was trying to re- rewind them back because I, I met the civil engineer here the first time that they were on site. We walked everything and he was the one who actually, and, and again, I'll go back to him again and, and, because he, he may have been making notes, obviously, as we covered the, the whole project. And if I remember correctly, don't, don't take this to, to heart, but I believe what his statement was, was, yeah, they have water problems here, but these basins are all, they're all covered up. And I, because I was trying to, when I said that earlier, I was trying to remember who, who actually made that statement that day. And, and I believe he said, well, as long as those stay uncovered, we won't have that water issue. But let me go back to him and have him look at his notes, have him overview, uh, with, with the, obviously, the topo and see what we're actually talking about for grades in there and then we'll get back to you.
Perfect. And, you know, if that's his answer, that's his answer and I'm fine with that. But go ahead.
No, please, are you?
Nope, I'm done.
Okay, I was just going to say, I think it sounds like we have a great plan moving forward. If there's no other questions from, from the board?
One more. On some of the stuff on the, I have all the line items of the change orders or options we had asked you to price out for us. or options we had asked you to price out for us. On some of this, if we have somebody do the concrete and whatnot, is your guys' company willing to come back and spray the rubber surface, like on some of these running, uh, let's see, like, say the triple jump?
Just do the track surface only?
Yeah.
Sure, absolutely.
And you guys would give us pricing for that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because I, I've told Dr. Cobb, I think there's some of this stuff that we can get done here locally. We can pull up the specs and everything else and have them form it up and do it.
Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you so much for, for indulging our questions.
Thank you.
The track, uh, or the football field and the soccer field, they look amazing. And I really appreciate my board members here with their detailed knowledge of what goes into this, because we so wanna make it right for our community and for our kids, um, for the long term.
As do we. We wanna make sure that we leave a, the perfect project behind.
Certainly. And, and the history of your projects that you've done before certainly show that you, uh, really do want to make it right. So we appreciate you discussing with us and, uh, being here to discuss with us tonight. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, board members, we...
Go to the next one.
We have some more discussion on this item, I believe.
Still, an action item that needs to, to be addressed here in terms of how this board wants to respond to liquidated damages, and whether or not they're...
That's just where I was going, Dr. Cobb.
You got it.
Alright.
We need, we need to determine, um, obviously, the contract is what it is. I had a conversation with Mike, Mike Norris today. Um, the contract would indicate, uh, that we have, um, a period of time in which we need to submit in writing that we are interested in, um, going after liquidated damages. Uh, so ultimately, this board needs to, to make a decision as to whether or not, um, LD is, is something that we wanna do. If we wait too long, then we will forfeit the opportunity to do so. So, leave it in the hands of the board to make a decision, and I'll follow up with, um, and America on, on our response there.
And what does the contract say when liquidated damage is gonna actually supposedly stop? As I told you today, or said earlier, the sidewalk was still covered with...
Yep, the contract indicated it's substantial completion. So we signed the substantial completion on September fourth, uh, which you, you see there. That would have been the final certificate of substantial completion. Um, the contract indicates that you'd have twenty-one days from, um, the point of discontent, uh, which in essence is, when did they, when did they not finish on time? So we, we saw the finish date on nine-four. I've got twenty-one days from that point to make a determination and identify with them in writing that we would either be interested or not interested in liquidated damages.
So how many days are we looking at right now?
It's twenty-one days.
That they have in liquidated...
The fourteenth through the...
So it's twenty-one thousand dollars?
Twenty, twenty-one thousand dollars.
And, and how much time and cost does that cost our district and you, from your time, uh, away from other school business to address this?
Uh, it, I won't use this as an excuse to do anything. A part of my job is to address the, the issues of, of the district, but already spent a substantial amount of time, uh, on the track, all the way from the beginning to the end. We've spent a lot of time on this. Um, there is no doubt that we will get some pushback. Um, so part of the contract would indicate that any change orders that would, uh, impact their ability to complete the process would, would push back that date. You saw that one of them, the date was, um, uh, August twenty-eighth. They, they moved it back. Now, I would, I would push that, um, that the soil stabilization did not create a two-week window of change for them. I actually think they said here the last time that we were here, and they said three days. So even at that, it pushes it back eighteen days. Um, obviously, the track has not been an issue for them, as we still sit here. We had initially talked about a window of opportunity with the track when they did what Harold was talking about, laying the asphalt, allowing that three or four days, five days, to do the asphalt before they put the turf down, so that we could get it down and have the cure time. But obviously, that didn't occur either. So I don't know that that change order substantially impacted their ability to complete the project on time. Um, so, all of those things. There will be a cost associated with Mike Norris and following through, because certainly they're going to, uh, they're not just gonna hand over twenty-one thousand dollars, nor would I expect them to. Uh, it's not what businesses do. Um, but there, there will be, there certainly will be time, and there certainly will be cost to an attorney. Um, the question is really just, what, what do we wanna do here? And if we, um, part of, part of what we can do, and we can talk about, um, the sealant and whatnot, and, and just so you all know, I, um, I had Daryl reach out to Kilo Construction to see about sealant around the edges. They're, they're supposed to be coming in at some point in time to give us a more local bid on what the sealant would cost for those areas. Um, certainly, they seem open to, uh, local vendors doing, doing the work instead of them doing the work. Um, so initially, when, when we had the conversation before we got to twenty-one days, uh, part of the conversation that, that some of you and I had was whether or not we just trade out one of those things for liquidated damages. I'm not quite sure that that's what, that's what this board wants to do. Um, but I'm also not sure exactly what, what we can get out of, out of it. So it, it's just a process that we have to play through, if you wanna, if you wanna play it through. I, I think that there are a couple of things that, that we should remember in making the, the determination. Are they behind? Yes. Is that their responsibility? Yes. Those are the two greatest strikes against them. I think something else to consider, uh, is, was there any harm to our district at this point? And, and the answer to that is no. All of our students have participated as normal. Is the track pretty? No, but the track wouldn't be done by now anyways. Um, so it really just comes down to, do you want to hold them to the letter of the law in the contract? Uh, or do you not? Um, and again, like I said in the update, I can go either way on this. This is, if this is a fight that the board wants to, to take, I'm willing to, to fight the fight. If it's not, I'm also willing to shake their hands and thank them for very beautiful turf fields, because they've, the fields are awesome. They're incredible. And we got everything that we, that we wanted when we, when we signed up for turf facilities.
I guess my only concern is, is they got started a month late.
Yeah.
We gave them the opportunity to start early. They didn't take that. And they didn't show up until June...
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, when their contract date was May sixteenth?
Uh, yeah, May, we gave them, uh, the day after graduation, which would have been May fourteenth. Uh, and we actually gave them the opportunity, as you said, to, to start before then.
So, I, I feel we have given them plenty of opportunities to have not lost these twenty-one days. And, am I saying it's fully twenty-one thousand dollars that we expect to take out of them? No, but I think it starts the conversation with them. Like, you know you dropped the ball, you've told us and admitted that you've dropped the ball, therefore, there, there's something to pay for that. But that's just my opinion.
And previously, we're trying to blame it on us.
So...
Not tonight, but...
So I, before I give, I have a question, then I'll make a statement. I know, shocker. Uh, will they be late on the track as well? There's no way they're gonna be done before November one on the track.
No, I can't imagine that they are.
Okay. And so we're gonna, we're gonna have the same discussion on the track, right?
Yes.
And so as a board, if we sit here and say, "Liquidated damages don't mean anything to us," okay? We're saying two things. Anybody in the future is gonna look at us and go, "Well, no big deal. They don't ever fall through." And your current contractor's going to say, "Well, hey, we let the first one slide, they'll let the second one." So my recommendation is we do two things. One is we preserve the right to pursue, pursue liquidated damages. That's a one-paragraph letter written by you or, uh, Mike Norris, that should take one hour of an attorney's time, and, or less, okay? And he ought to be able, he, he doesn't need to do a lot of research, he not make any arguments at this point in time. He's preserving the argument for a future date. Second of all, we all know that they mark up fifteen, twenty percent on change orders. So an eighty-five-hundred-dollar change order really only costs seven, five, six, seven thousand dollars. My point being is they're more than in their right to come back to us and say, "Well, how about we do this?" It actually, what I was trying to help them understand, the argument over sealing the asphalt is in their best interest. Because otherwise, we'll be here in two or three years, or another board's gonna be arguing before the ten years is up, because we'll have a water issue, guys. And so, I actually think it's in their, both of our interests to seal the outside of that track.
There is no doubt that we need to seal the asphalt around the track, and that has to happen one way or another. I think the question is whether or not they do it, or whether or not we hire a different company to do it.
Right. So what I'm just trying to say, this is a, as Eisenhower said, give your enemies a graceful way out. Well, here's the deal. Here's a graceful way out. Guys, let's pick up the asphalt deal and drop the LD.
Yep.
Okay? So I think there's ways to, uh, do this. So I would make a motion that we at least preserve the right for liquidated damages, but we negotiate our way out of it, so we don't spend ten thousand dollars in legal fees, and neither do they. We're, we're fools, and we both spend ten thousand dollars in attorney fees fighting this over. Let's just figure it out, like you said. So we all walk away, uh, with a quality project. We spend the money where we need to spend it. We don't gouge them, they don't gouge us, and we, we're all better off for it. So I think the fair trade-off is to preserve our right to, uh, pursue liquidated damages, but we discussed that a fair settlement would be, take care of the, uh, seal, uh, chip and sealing of the asphalt around the deal and go on.
There's been a, a motion raised by, or, uh, presented by Harold Wingert. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Shanda Olmstead. We'll go ahead and take a roll call vote.
I ask a question first, though. Could we also pursue other things from the company, like an extended warranty, something like that? Other things like that could be brought in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm open to that.
I think maybe what you add to that is to give me some latitude to communicate those wishes with them, and, and try to maneuver a, a best situation possible for us.
I like that. And it, it's really helping all of us, right? I mean, helping the company, by the way, as well. So I like that.
Both sides.
So do you need to clarify that motion? Harold?
I just think that...
She says yes.
What? Terry, don't nod your head. No, we're fine.
Okay, we'll write it down. Give us the words, Harold.
I make a motion that we pursue, uh, or protect our right to pursue, uh, liquidated damages by sending a letter, but that we authorize Dr. Cobb's to negotiate, uh, an in-kind, uh, settlement to, by providing several services that we were going to need on the track, extended warranty, uh, asphalt, uh, future maintenance, contract, things like that. There's multiple things that we both could see being fitted.
Okay, stop, stop.
You're right, whatever you want to.
We got it, okay, perfect.
Terry, is that enough for you?
Shanda, do you still second that? Alright, we'll do a roll call vote now. I'm sorry, if there were no other questions or statements about that.
I will just say, I reiterate, the asphalt right at the steps coming down off the bleachers, I don't know if resealing's truly gonna fix the problem right there, because when it's already fallen like this, we're still gonna have a, a dam, so to speak, that's gonna hold water there. So, I don't know. That's something you can discuss with them. I just...
And I had written down here that I would like you to speak with the civil engineer and hear what he said from his notes, not just, "Yes, it was covered basins."
Yep, yep, okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I think we're ready to take this roll call vote now. Uh, Lynda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore?
I had trouble hearing all of the motion.
I'm really beating it.
Given the length of it, I would say yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes seven-oh. Alright. At this point, we do need to, uh, move into that negotiations, uh, executive session. If somebody would like to read the statement that is provided, uh, we'll probably need, how many minutes do you think?
Lynda, Melidia, what do you think? You think we need more than fifteen minutes to talk about this?
I was gonna say fifteen.
Yeah, fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes, and we need to invite Dr. Cobb's and Mr. Robinson. Okay.
I move that the board go into executive session to discuss teacher negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under coma, and that the open meeting shall resume at eight-thirty, and that Dr. Cobb's and Mr. Robinson and Mrs. Bybee, or who all wants to come?
I don't.
Alright, and Mr. Robinson also be included.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chris Cunningham, moved by Lynda Alderman, that we move into executive session. All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes seven-oh. Are we gonna carry Susan with us?
I can carry her. I, I want, Julie, I wanna bring my notes. Is that okay?
Yeah. You got her.
Going to regular session, please raise your hand.
Oh, sorry.
That passes six.
Sure, she voted yes.
Probably Susan. All right, so we are at KDHE site. Do we want to go ahead?
We need to amend the agenda again. Yep.
All right, would somebody like to make a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, and can you, I need, I need a statement of amendment from our negotiators, please.
Uh, I, I would like to amend the agenda to.
Approve negotiations.
Approve the negotiations.
Is there a second?
Second.
And all in favor, please raise your hand. That passes seven oh, and we will put that down. Where do we want to do that? Can we just do it now?
Yeah, can we put it at five oh, five oh two?
Yep, let's do that now. Would somebody like to make that motion?
Madam President, I move that we approve the negotiations agreement we've discussed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was moved by Harold Wingert and seconded by Melidia Payne that we approve the negotiations as we discussed. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Billy D'Andrio, yes. Susan Moore? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Sandra Olmstad?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes seven oh.
Okay, so just for the board's clarification, what, what they can understand on this, what will happen next is that I'll let OEA know that the board approved the agreements that we made with OEA. They will put it out for ratification vote. Once they approve, they will work with Shante Kemp and a couple others to actually develop a true negotiated agreement document, and we'll bring that back to the board afterwards for approval. Hopefully, we can get that done here fairly quickly.
Wonderful, thank you. We are moving on to KDHE site. So Dr. Cobb is going to give us some information from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment on, on navigating the.
Okay, so you should have a couple of documents in front of you. One is the gating criteria. This is not something that we've spent much time talking about here, as our county has kind of developed their own gating criteria. But there are some pieces of this that are being used across the state to give some insight as to the, the severity of outbreaks and COVID-19 taking place within counties that I wanted you to be able to utilize and learn how they're using it. So Dean, if you would click on the, the, the link that I had on, on the page, that link right there, and scroll at least, click on the COVID-19 cases in Kansas link up there. You missed it. There it is. Okay, so you guys have access to this site. This is the KDHE site, and there is a, a place for COVID-19 right there. What I want to focus on is the gating, the school gating metrics. This gives us some, some guidelines within this document as to how impactful the things that are going on in Franklin County are to, to what we need to do. So there are a couple of things that, that we want to address. So one is the two-week county percent positive case. So Dean, if you scroll down there, the two-week percent positive case rate, if you click on that, towards the bottom of this page, right up there, you can just select Franklin County. And all we have to do is, is look at, at Franklin County and. Okay, and so what this does is it gives you an indication of what's going on up to date. So you can see nine thirteen was the, was the last. If, if you look up, Dean, there's a, a deal up above that's between, nope, scroll up just a little bit. It'll tell you what the, the colors mean. So you want to be blue, you're less than five percent. If you're red, you're more than fifteen percent, okay? Those things stand out, but what really matters is how many people that impacts, right? So if you look down there, you can see that our age range, eighteen to twenty-four and twenty-five to thirty-four-year-olds are red right now. Everybody else is pretty mild, less than five percent for the most part. But if you click on that, it's one case. So one positive test is indicating red. That's because we're not testing a whole lot of people right now, because we're not seeing a lot of, a lot of illness. So what that would mean for us total in Franklin County is that, that we are in the green. We are less than five percent overall, actually, it just went up on me today. We're in yellow, so that puts us in the, in the yellow range. But again, only two positive tests, and you begin to put these things together as a holistic vision, right? Two positive tests overall, and, and not, not a whole lot in terms of volume. If you look overall at our trends, you see a whole lot of blue dots on there, right? Which would tell us that over the course of the last few weeks, we haven't seen a lot of positive cases in our county. Okay, so Dean, if you scroll back up and go to the next one, go, click on school gating metrics again, and then click on trend and incident rate. Okay, so this also tells you how many cases you would have per one thousand inhabitants. Okay, so what they're looking at is anything less than fifty people out of a thousand is considered good. That's green. That's do things as, as safe as you can, but feel free to, to do some more. This gives us an indication of where our overall values are with, with this number, right? So as you look there, you can see by, by student, but Dean, if you scroll back up to the whole group, no, just down there where it's Franklin County, you can see that over the course of the last month, we've really only had one week in which we saw rising incident rates. And Dean, if you click on, if you just hover above next to over that one, you can see a number of new cases. So at one point in time, we got over fifty-four cases. At fifty-four cases per thousand, that would still only have put us in the yellow. Okay, so it's not a huge burden upon our community, and remember that that's per one hundred thousand. Right, so we, we don't have a hundred thousand people in our community. So that's just something that we need to consider. And one more piece of what we need to, to look at in terms of, of how we, how we go about this. So Dean, if you could scroll back up there again. You can also look at hospital capacity. We don't need to do this, right? We, but you, you can begin to recognize how this site works. There are different metrics within the gating criteria that give you some insight as to how your county is doing as a whole. We had this morning when I looked, and it's changed a little bit now, in, in one, two, three, four of the, three of the four areas, we were green, right? Which would indicate that we're doing very well without a huge issue in terms of COVID-19 in our county. One, the trend in county incident rate was increasing, but we had gone from like two to four. So not a huge volume of increase. That puts us in the red because we're increasing, but it wasn't a huge jump. So again, you have to take one of the, each one of those things independently, but also look at them collectively as we move forward. The last piece that they talk about is student absenteeism. That's something that we pull off of our own data, not the, not the county's data and not the state's data. We utilize it based upon our last year's student absentee rate in comparison to this year's absentee rate. If there is a greater than six percent change in your absentee rate, then you've got some problems. If not, then for the most part, you're considered kind of normal. So when you hear other people talk about using the gating criteria to determine whether they've gone hybrid or remote or full, full inclusion, whatever it happens to be, these are some of the metrics that they're using to make those determinations, okay? More than anything, I wanted you guys to know that this site was available, something that you can monitor and watch. The different pieces that we utilize, there's another one that talks about hospital beds and so on and so forth. All of those things impact how the state looks at our individual counties. Okay? Any questions on this? I guess certainly just for information for you guys to be able to follow.
I will say, I went to a, an hour presentation on this a couple weeks ago, and there was a nice PowerPoint that they sent. And I did forward that to Dr. Cobb. If anybody's interested in having that PowerPoint, certainly he can email it to any of you as well. But it was a nice kind of little more in-depth explanation of this and, and how that affects the different numbers.
Yep.
Are school districts bound by this?
No. So the gating criteria that was created by KSDE was, was intended to be a, a template for schools to use if they want to. It didn't really impact us. Our, our intention on going hybrid had a number of, of different causal impacts on it. And our gating criteria for sports was nowhere near the reasons that, that this creates. So we have not used this gating criteria, but it does provide information for us in terms of the extent of the coronavirus in our community and how we should be making decisions moving forward about not only education, but different programmings that we have throughout our district and community as we continue to move forward. Especially if, as we continue through this process, we don't see increases. If what we recognize is that the, the safety precautions that we are putting in place are having an impact to either plateau or diminish those rates, then we know that what we're doing is right, and we can begin to, to improve how we provide instruction for our kids. If what we see is negative impact based upon that, we see more increases, we see quarantines taking place, then we've got to recognize that maybe we need to do something different from what we're currently doing. So either way, the information is beneficial to us in determining our next course of action.
I just want to compliment the staff and the custodians and the admin. I think that we're, and again, I'm thinking longer term than, you know, even October, November, December. I think we're going to see less flu cases, less cold cases. I think that the staff and the admin and has done a great job of taking seriously cleaning, disinfecting, social distancing. I think our students are taking it serious. I think it's a great example, and I think we'll have benefits just more than COVID. I mean, I think this will benefit us in a lot of ways.
I completely agree, and obviously, I haven't been in the school, so I have to rely on like my kids to tell me things. And one of my students had a questionnaire to fill out, and one of the questions was, do you have any concerns about returning to school? And her comment was, no, the way they're running it, there's not a germ in the entire building. But that was what she wrote for the questionnaire, so I think that speaks.
Yes, our, our, our maintenance and custodial staff have done a phenomenal job and have been prepping for this for several months. Our teaching staff, when we, when we had a clear course of action for them and how we were going to provide instruction, have, have worked tirelessly. You mentioned earlier that, that they have worked extremely hard to provide the best that we can for our kids. And we couldn't be more appreciative of the work that our, our administrative team, our, our custodial staff, our, our classified staff, our, our teaching staff, all of our ancillary staff, everybody that's involved in the, in the education of kids, has done a phenomenal job and made a very poor situation as good as it can be. And now we've been, been given some tools to begin to determine how we can get better as we go through it. So it's, it's been good so far.
Very good.
And I think we are moving on to their next section, which is the enrollment update.
Yep, so this piece, I just, there's been lots of questions about how COVID-19 is going to impact our, our enrollment. So one of the things that I wanted to show you is two thousand nineteen, last year, in comparison to two thousand and twenty of, of this year, overall, we're down about eighty students. A portion of that is that we knew that we had declining enrollment. It's not near the volume of students not returning to school as we've seen in some other districts. Really large percentages of students making decisions not to return. I think that there are, you know, a number of reasons for that. I would like to thank that a big part of that is because our schools have done a great job communicating to families and providing as best a, a response as we can. I certainly want to thank United Way and ORC and Reach for the Stars, providing full day options for some of our kiddos. That has certainly, that has certainly helped. But I, what I do want to show you here are a couple of things. If you, if you look at this at a diagonal, so the one hundred and seventy-two down here as a kindergartner in two thousand nineteen is correlated to the one hundred and fifty-five as a first grader in two thousand and twenty. You can see that we have a greater decline amongst students at the elementary level than we do at the secondary level, which is interesting, and I'm not quite sure why that, why that is the case. But typically, we, we're seeing a double-digit decrease in, in students really, one through five. And fifth grade being the, the caveat there at eight. Kindergarten is, is not able to be correlated. That minus two there is correlated with the number of seniors that left. Right, so if we're just talking about differences in numbers, we graduated one hundred and forty-seven seniors. We brought in one hundred and forty-five kindergartners, so it's a, it's a net loss of two. What you can see there, and I think what is important to note here, is that our class sizes are really, really good. So we have three sections at every level, with the exception of kindergarten at Sunflower and fifth grade at Sunflower and Lincoln. They both have four sections, excuse me, and fifth grade at Garfield, or at Garfield. Fifth grade at Garfield has two sections. That was a, a part of the change that we were making. Lincoln and Sunflower both still have four sections at fifth grade. Sunflower has two sections at kindergarten because of a late, a late resignation of, of staff. And, but they have, you can see they have the lowest number of, of kindergartners. So even though they have high numbers in that class, it's still twenty-two students per, per class, which is doable. But when you look at our average class sizes, we only have a couple of classes across all three buildings that, that are at twenty students or above, which is what our intention was when we started this. Twenty, being below twenty students, even with the changes that we've made, is really valuable for our district. It's been, it's been a positive thing all the way around, and it has created some greater equity amongst our buildings. I don't know when the last time we saw numbers being as similar across all three buildings as they are right now. But we really have strong numbers of class sizes. We, again, we have great teachers. The areas that we currently have more than three sections or less than three sections, we'll begin to address and, and take care of those things. But we will be three-section schools across the district for next year. And, and that will be, certainly be a positive. Now, what we hope is that we begin to see that increase in enrollment, and we can start going back to four sections as we see that enrollment increase. Our buildings were built for it. We know that we can handle it, but we also want to make sure that we're doing the right thing in terms of the business side of, of education as well. So just wanted to let you know a couple of things. One, our class size of the elementary is not very big, less than twenty in almost every class. And then a couple that, that are outliers there, but nothing greater than twenty-two. Okay? Okay, that's what we have for enrollment.
Thank you. We are moving on to our professional development update. Mrs. Bybee is going to give us a, a brief overview of what's been going on to get everybody ready for the school year. We know there's been lots of time and energy spent. Welcome.
Indeed, yes. There has, anybody who's ever been involved in professional development, first of all, the planning of it is typically extensive. We wanted to make sure that we knew what our needs were, and through that, we used the feedback from a variety of. You want to move up to the next slide, Dean?
Sorry.
You're fine. A variety of committees that we determined, which I have already informed you all of, but that our need was to be as consistent as possible with what we were doing remotely, remote or with our, stemming off of the continual learning. So from that, we had Google Classroom. Our secondary teachers, most of them were very versed in Google Classroom, but our elementary teachers were not. Some used it, some did not, so there was a lot of new learning that happened here. So we also had to think about our professional development. How we typically have provided professional development is in large groups, and we weren't able to do that. So a lot of groups of teachers worked very hard to be able to put together what we felt was a great way to offer professional development and reach everyone's needs. So we had used video, we used Big Blue Button, we used checklists so that teachers, those teachers who really already understood Google Classroom could move into what are the specifics that we need to make sure we're providing that are consistent across the board, across every level. So, so all of our families, no matter what level their child was at, Google Classroom would be used the same way. All of our paras and aides we brought in early so that they would also be trained, so that they knew how they needed to be able to support our students using these areas of Google Classroom, Big Blue Button, Class Dojo. They also, we also provided opportunity for our teachers to be able to plan, because we knew we had to train students and parents. And we knew that was vital the first few weeks to make sure that those things got done so that no matter what, whether they were full remote or half-day, that they would have the understanding on how to use that. And none of that goes without glitches. That's just, anytime you're learning something new, there are going to be glitches. But I feel like, man, our teachers and our staff have worked so hard. And so even just putting this whole list together of things that we utilize these twelve days for, I just want to thank you all as a board for supporting those twelve days. There are a lot of districts that those, their teachers did not get the amount of time that our teachers got before our kids came. And, you know, sometimes in the past, you might have thought, oh, professional development days, full days, may not have always been utilized to their best, because teachers kind of fizzle out towards the end of that day. But I will tell you, I think our, our teachers have worked tirelessly to, because they wanted to give what was best to our students and be able to try to understand so much of this new learning. So, and, and our administrative staff, and Mr. Grelle has done an amazing job of helping us understand, because, you know, he has infinite wisdom. And sometimes it's hard for us to understand where his thought process is. So he did a great job of coming down to the level that some of us needed to have, including me, of how to be able to understand if the technology that maybe we are not used to. And he also provided for also our classified staff, those that would be involved in using that. So, and Class Dojo and Skyward with communicating with families, I saw a couple of teachers, especially the first few days, that they really utilized that. It made it, made it very beneficial for them that they had, were using Class Dojo with their families, because they were communicating that way right on when they, as a remote teacher, because their child couldn't get on. And instead of worrying about, okay, are they going to email me? Are they going to text me? No, we're using Class Dojo. They, they had it right there, and they were able to be able to give the support that they needed to those families. Our tech aides have worked tirelessly, and helping our secretaries to answer phone calls and helping families to troubleshoot the things that they needed to do to be able to get their kids on or struggles that they might have. The remote learning log, Dean Grelle created and aligned it with our Google Classroom to be able to simplify what those expectations are, even though those expectations tend to change pretty readily. So we will be having more conversations about the remote learning log, but I know that that has been a concern of a lot of our families and teachers too. But what's most important is our teachers had to figure out not only all of this electronic, uh, technology, but they still had to think about, okay, what am I teaching? And how am I doing this differently? Because this is so completely different than what they're used to teaching when they have their kids coming into their classroom with them. So the amount of time that they were able to use to be able to determine, how am I best going to provide the instruction? First of all, I'm going to have to pare it down, not, not get rid of any standards. We're still responsible for those standards, but how can we teach and maybe combine some standards? How can we be more efficient with our, with our teaching? So, and that, it takes a lot of work. So there's been so much collaboration that has really been super beneficial for our, our teachers too. Not only to mention some of the new things that we were able to provide with some more digital programs. So those teachers with IXL, teachers are already basically know, but there were some teachers that weren't super versed in IXL, so they're learning that piece. Musella for six through twelve is able to, teachers are able to have students be able to read articles and do reading support through that. Again, a new area for some people. There are so many areas that are so new for our teachers that they have really just stepped up and done an amazing job. They're exhausted for all, with kids only being here for a few days. But it's more a mental exhaustion versus that physical exhaustion. Being able to meet with our families, whether it was virtual or in person, was very valuable to be, to kick our year off with. Schedules are unbelievably difficult when you're trying to do, to really provide the hybrid model and try to provide families that consistency. So I commend our administrators and leadership teams within our buildings for putting together what really seems to be working so far. The procedures, if you've gone to any school at the arrival or dismissal or lunch, and who's providing lunches to the kids? And how is that happening? And making sure it's on time. And the safety protocols, when are we cleaning and what are we cleaning and who's cleaning? All of those things are things that when you think about the logistics of how to, a school runs smoothly are things that we needed this time for in order to make sure that our systems were in place. And you are continually seeing those being tweaked, and because as you're involved in it, you see what needs to change a little bit. So, and now what our teach, what our buildings are looking at is our assessments. And looking at how do we go about giving our assessments to those kids who are full remote learners? How are we, what's our priority for giving certain assessments so that we can see where our kids are at? So if you think about, I've been talking with quite a few teachers. I just have a few pictures here of some things that you see. A remote learning teacher at Sunflower, where she had a complete schedule colored out for her family so that they knew as remote learners what they would, what they're expected to. When are they expected to be live? What are they expect, what are they working on when they're not live? So all of those take, all of that takes a lot of planning time and, and time to be able to put those things together and make them work. We have high school with developing the walk, the hallways. How are we going to get our kids to walk safely through our hallways? So you can see an example there for the high school. And then the, the. And then the, the, uh, when to use, uh, that was a high school teacher going through with her, one of her classes, what are some of the expectations for that Google Classroom? Mrs. Rich, teaching kindergarten through, um, all, all remote learning. All things that we have not had to do before. So I was talking with a teacher earlier this, or last week, and she had said, "It's like being a first teacher, or first-year teacher, but a little worse, because usually as a first-year teacher, you tell our first-year teachers, you just follow your team, they will let you know what you need to do, they're going to help you with the curriculum, they're going to help you with how everything works." But right now, we're all in, uh, we're all experiencing something that we have not experienced before as teachers. So it is exhausting. But the thing that I noted, and all of us as administrators have noted as we've walked through the buildings, there's that, "Oh my gosh, I'm so tired," or, "Oh, this is so frustrating, I have to really constantly be troubleshooting with my kids." The first few days was, I don't feel like we got a lot of instruction done, because I was trying to help kids on, but everyone's po, everyone's attitude is as positive as it can be, but we're going to figure it out. So it's that kind of can-do, um, attitude. So I'm so proud of really what our district has done. Um, half-days are difficult, there's very few districts that are doing half-days. It was a lot easier to schedule, um, a hybrid being where you had two days on, one day off, or whatever the case may be, but it was important for our teachers to see their kids every single day. So, so what we have done as a district, I think, is, is amazing, and I appreciate your support in having the amount of days that we had. There's a lot of more work yet to come, but, and a lot of changes that's continually happened. But, uh, this was something that I got from Jackie Steelman, I asked for her permission to be able to use this. So, um, I've been in education a long time, so I could appreciate a lot of the things that Jackie wrote here. She had shared this, um, on her own personal social media site, but I asked her if we could, if I could use this, because I, I started teaching with Diddo Machines. I totally remember that, with the, the left, the purple all over your hands and your face. And then she describes the different computers that she has seen as, in her years of teaching, and then on to Chrome, one-to-one Chromebooks appearing in recent years, and now we're on Google Classroom, Big Blue Button and online learning logs. But what hasn't changed is our why, and it's all for our kids. And I thought, that just really sums up what I have seen in our schools with our teachers, is, as, as the periods and flows that they may have of the, the frustrations and the new things that they're trying to figure out, they are, they are here because they are here for our kids, and what I heard so much on that first day or that first week is just so great to have our kids back in school. So, um, and honestly, we had a couple, couple teachers who were even somewhat sad, who are remote teachers, because they miss having those kids in their, physically in their room. So it's, it's difficult, and so it's the same for families. We appreciate the families, what they're doing to, appreciate that they want their kids to be full remote learners, and what they're doing to help those kids, their kids to be supported in that. So, any questions?
I, I do want to say I am confident that I speak for the entire board when I say how proud we are of all of the staff and employees and administrators of 290, and of our students and our families and our community. Um, you all have just taken a situation that was very difficult and just kept it very positive and are doing great things for all of our students, and it's really appreciated. Uh, we know it's not easy, but we, we do appreciate you all.
And you know, our administrators have an amazing job of keeping a, a good pulse on, on their staff, because we recognize that there are some things that we might have to pull back on, because they just cannot have one more thing put on them. So we are recognizing some of those things that we have to maybe alter or change as to what we had originally planned, um, for the year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
I think before we get to neighborhood revitalization here real quick, I want to make sure that there, there are some people, our teachers are at the forefront of all of this, and certainly we've done an, an awful lot of, um, appreciation, or at least vocal appreciation, um, for the, for the work that they've done. There are a number of other people in our district who work behind the scenes that we really need to, to thank. One is Dean Grill. I mean, what Dean provided for us this year in the midst of nobody knowing what the heck to do in a pandemic, knowing that we probably have the foremost, um, the, the foremost, uh, intellect in school technology, sitting right there. Maybe not even in school technology. Dean's pretty darn smart, if you, if you've spent any time with him. He has made our jobs much easier, and really has done some things that, that I don't think other tech directors would have done for their districts, um, and things that we didn't even have to ask him to do, and things that he would get really excited about. One is learning logs, and it, I mean, it was fun to watch Dean come in every morning, "Hey, let me show you what I did last night." And Dean's spending his own hours of, of time at home manipulating this log, because it's fun for him to develop something and then watch us get excited about how much easier it makes our job. The Ottawa Sports Network, which is going to quickly be renamed the Dean Grill Sports Programming, uh, Network, has been phenomenal. It's been phenomenal, and it is so much better than any of us could have ever imagined a live stream being. We're doing replays now on a live stream? Like, I mean, yeah, it, it's coming, right? It's coming. Dean has been awesome, but he's not the, he's not the only one. We don't do much talking about transportation, nor have we really discussed the importance of transportation here. Frida has just done it. We have, one of, when we started going through this process, we knew that there were some things that we needed to move off of our plate and let somebody else take care of. Technology was one. We had to gather our teachers around, we put technology in the hands of Dean, make sure we have everything we need. Here's our vision, here's what we have to do, you give us a path to get there, and Dean did so. We talked about food service. Here's what our schedule has to look like. Jody, I need you to take food service and, and mean that I don't have to worry about how we're going to feed kids. And she did it, and OPA has done it, and it's been great. When we talked about transportation and having a half-day schedule to where we were going to have to double our transportation, I just needed Frida to say, "I've got this for you. You guys worry about educating kids, I'll take care of transportation." And she did it. And even though none of those things go without hiccups, they have gone without major catastrophe in a time in which we have not had any type of guidance in, in terms of being through this before. Those people are phenomenal. Our special ed department, Josh, is working through regulation changes that are unheard of in these times. We've never been through any of them before, and yet every day, we have multiple conversations about what's changing, what are the laws, what are the litigation that's coming now? How do we have to impact these things? And this is the stuff that happens each and every day. Our school psychs have been phenomenal, our social workers have been phenomenal, our pairs have been phenomenal, our sped staff has been phenomenal, our teachers are great, our, our classified staff is great. This district is a great place to be, and they've done a phenomenal job making sure that we can get our kids to and from school and educated every day. Now we can talk about neighborhood revitalization.
I feel like we should all say, "Here, here." Absolutely. All right, well, we will move along on that great note to neighborhood revitalization. Um, this is another request, we've had these before, Dr. Cobb?
Yeah, so this is, uh, same thing. I think last time we went through this, Harold mentioned that we would see an additional, uh, request coming to us. This is what it is, I think, eight total residences. Um, the, the quality thing about this one is that, um, those residents is at 706 North Cedar and 714 North Cedar are coming off of the old Lincoln Lot. Uh, so we're seeing some, some things that, uh, we have contributed to the growth of our community, which is, which is a great thing, but all of these are going to be beneficial to the community. I will get with, um, with Charlotte about seeing how the, uh, return cost on this investment works over the course of time, and I'll make sure that I get that information for everybody.
Thank you. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the neighborhood revitalization plan?
Madam President, I move that we approve the neighborhood revitalization plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was moved by Harold Wingert and seconded by Chris Cunningham that we approve the neighborhood revitalization plan. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Lydia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes seven oh.
And just an announcement, there's one more coming. Ottawa's still growing, I mean, it's phenomenal.
We got it. We do not need another executive session for negotiations tonight, we are finished with that. You all have been presented a personnel report. Would somebody like to, uh, make a motion to approve said report?
Madam President, I move that we approve the personnel report.
Is there a second? I will second it.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's all right. It was moved by, uh, Linda Alderman and seconded by Julie Dandrio to approve the personnel report. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Lydia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes seven oh as well, and we are down to announcements.
I would just say there, there's so much going on, um, and to, to, we have athletic programs going on each and every night. Um, I do have passes for everybody, they're up in my office, I'll get them for you before you leave. Our teachers, like we said, have done an amazing job. You're going to begin to get more information from them as we continue to move forward. Um, there's not a lot of the things that we used to do in terms of open houses and, and those, uh, types of things that are, that are occurring, but, uh, as we get more, more stabilized into what we're doing, we'll see more and more of that moving forward, so.
Wonderful. All right, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
It's a mood.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. That passes seven oh. Thank you.